Evening, welcome to the school board meeting. It's Monday, January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, six o'clock. We're in Susan's probably lives of boarding eighteen-seven building. If you call the meeting to order and ask Mr. Kelly to call.
Mrs. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Gayheart?
Here.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Here.
Mr. Martel?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Ray?
Here.
Mr. Scarrow?
Here.
Ms. Stoltz?
Here.
Ms. Borpego?
Here.
You do have a quorum, we will continue, and I will note that tonight's meeting has been known as first day statutes. Do we have any community participation other than what's on the agenda?
I received any email notifications and door notifications.
Very none, so that's just reading that. We go to the current college academy is student presentation.
It's just me. I can try to look younger. Show you a great tip top. I just love real. I know I talk a lot about youth build, but believe it or not, there's other things happening at the current college academy. And I thought this was a really great thing to talk about tonight because my guess is that between spring of two thousand and twenty and spring of two thousand and twenty-one, we were less focused on outcomes in terms of like certifications and enrollment in college. Maybe that wasn't on our mind because other things were on our mind. But at the current college academy, Elkhorn High School and options virtual charters, we were because we forced. We had applied for a grant through the Wisconsin Technical College because we had worked with them on all these career pathways. We talked with them about having these one-year pathways for students where they could dip their toe in the water. And students could take pathways, welding, nursing assistant, cosmetology, culinary, security professionals, and really get a feel of the program and then decide if they want to go on for there. It was kind of our first step to kind of what is now our thought that we want students to be able to get associate's degrees in their pursuit of gateway college. So that is where the chance grant comprehensive health and assistance needed for college education came from because Gateway said, we like that mission. We like that idea of like these small one-year programs, get a feel for the rigor, the expectations, get them on campus, and then a global pandemic. That are any kind of site. So we all participated. It was across our district and solely Elkhorn that Gateway wrote this grant for and provided staffing for, which is really exciting. But now looking back, it's great that we were able to get together, really look at what our outcomes were during an incredibly difficult time where, you know, things went online, of course, but then also our ability to get students excited for programming that isn't traditional and makes them set outside of their comfort zones. So, yes, we applied for it. And the three indicators that we're really looking at it is enrollment in these programs, these career pathways, retention that they're able to earn credit and then also not just credit, but could they earn a credential in that one. Key positions funded, we had a chance grant case manager and then a gateway to success. So gateway to success is a class that they created in terms of helping students understand like what their programming would be better understand, very individualized. Also some growth mindset, grit, persistence, education that we think every young person needs.
Might be the most challenging one credit.
You'll never do one credit glass, but yeah. We have had reports. And so Gateway was awarded one hundred and forty-four, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. And then our period of performance was during arguably one of the most difficult times during education, but in our seven career pathways, we had initially projected that we would enroll seventy-five students. We actually enrolled ninety-one, which is really exciting. Retention, where you want the indicator to be, even though we had projected seventy-five, we enrolled ninety-one, actually eighty-four ended up earning college credit. And then in terms of credential attainment, slightly lower metric, but that also is in the inclusion of we take students both in the beginning of a term and the end of terms. So if you think of that, that year in a welding program, we want to see you have both semesters. So it's not that students didn't continue on, but they may have continued on past the grant timeline. And here are where the college credentials were. Nursing assistant, welding maintenance, fabrication, those were technical diplomas. And then specific industry certificates where there are not technical diploma, CNC operator, retail beauty advisor, and security professional. Incidentally, this grant was how we were able to bring cosmetology to the current college academy. So this program is not offered on the Elkhorn campus. Now it is, which is really awesome for our students. We continue to fill the class quota every semester. And then also that these are act fifty-nine eligible for our district. So when you think of each one of these credentials earned, we're also able to get money back from DPI. It's just, it was a lot of work and I recognize Gateway in wanting to grow and stretch and meet the high school students with what they really are asking for. What can they do so that they get a career-ready credential, something that they could then additionally stack if they want to go on, but then to be able to earn it on the college campus here in Elkhorn, whether they are options virtual charter schools, CCA, or the high school.
I would also note that you can speak more to this, Kelly, but if not for some of those staff, their willingness to come and deliver the courses on campus, because most of Gateway have shut down, these programs here, the staff members were willing to come in, not even virtual. Most of them were still face-to-face, operating those labs, which would have been some of the only parts of Gateway that were doing that.
Well, you know, imagine reading welding online. Right. And you could read a book. Right. What is the difference between the nursing assistant and the CNA? Like it's the same. Oh, it is. Okay. All right. That's just how they quoted in Gateway. Got it. So he searched nursing assistant. Yep. That one course. Okay. And then the special thanks go to Christine Yasbeck. I know she's a really strong member of our community, but she was our chance grant manager. So she was the one working with students, their families, enrolling, progressing, class. She just did an amazing job. So if you see her in the community, please give her an extra special thank you. Terry Simmons is our dean on the Elkhorn campus, and so he was one of the key grant writers for this. Tom Kuzno, Scott Witty, the director or the associate VP of Buildings and Security, and then our manager on the Gateway campus for maintenance, did a phenomenal job motivating that cosmetology room. I learned more about buying facial supplies than I did. My life, like, you know, it's learning. Learning and growing. Good. Good. But, yeah, I just think specifically during this time when so many people were going online, we were able to do something really amazing for students. It's awesome. Any other questions? Did you just finish your doctorate? I did. Congratulations. I thought the doctor. I know, I did too. And I'm like, Kelly. I haven't seen it before. I like it. Yes, and I feel just a lot of just empathy for students because when the bottom fell out of the world, my program went online too. And I didn't expect to finish my doctorate online, but congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. It was, it was a. Because if you try to talk you into like, well, let it go.
Kelly, before you leave, I would just like to congratulate you with the achievement and the step up there. And.
Thank you.
You know, I really embraced the whole idea of exposing and immersing students into new opportunities. And I follow Mike Rowe quite a bit, and I think this goes into his educational thought as well, that we have to make, break their mindset that if it's not a four-year degree, it's not a consolation achievement. And I think by exposing kids and giving them these opportunities, we are changing mindsets, not only with the students, but with families and our community. So congratulations and keep up the good.
Thank you. And in terms of my doctorate, it was in dual enrollment participation and the programming offered. And it really, it is that key that, you know, the best outcomes that we have are when we have students in that college environment completely supported. And Elkhorn is doing an amazing job of that. We have so many ways for students to explore and decide what future ready looks like for them. Yeah, it's really, it's really exciting then to see Gateway say, okay, so we're going to change as well. And institutions like colleges, you know, don't often pivot quickly. But Gateway certainly does. Thanks, Paul.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. Lot of hard work, that's for sure.
So I'll just give you a little feel, and then I'm going to let them talk because we want to hear from them and not me, probably. Anyway, and first, I would like to thank you for not having us go after cute little kids. But usually we have the Jackson kids or the Westside kids here, so we appreciate that. And we're here to ask for permission to travel to our state convention in April and to our international convention in June, as long as things continue on that pathway. But I'll let Abby take it over. We haven't been here for a while, and so we thought maybe like just a quick update on going on in Elkhorn Hosa.
Hi, I'm president of Elkhorn Hosa, and I'm Abby. And we are, we have forty-five members that are competing this year. And we have our online regional starting this year, or sorry, this week. And we are planning to have in-person state and an in-person, in Wisconsin, in-person international region conference, which is also an international.
Hi, I'm Maddie Cooper. I'm the vice president of Elkhorn Hosa this year, and I'm competing in PSA for our competition. And December was a really successful month for our Hosa chapter. We gathered forty-nine books for the Children's Hospital to donate. All of our members, we volunteered a total of a hundred and twenty hours at Santa Claus, Santa Cruz, which helps with charities. And then we gathered three hundred and twenty-one food items to donate to the children's shelter.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kaylee Reynolds, and I'm the vice president of public relations for Wisconsin, or for Elkhorn Hosa, and I will be competing in host school this year. Also this year, Elkhorn Hosa started a hosted Duke campaign to spread kindness throughout the school and community. One little act of kindness will go a really wrong way and make somebody's day. So all members have to do is send me a description and picture of what they did for their act of kindness, and I will post it on the Elkhorn Hosa social media for everybody to see. So please consider giving us a follow, so you can see all of the what's good.
Hi, I'm Emma. I am the vice president of service projects for Elkhorn Hosa. Elkhorn Hosa recognizes all the stresses that high school students undergo. So to help cope with this, we have created Wellness Wednesdays, which is just a quick but effective ten minutes where we go into a psyche room and we listen to some reading and meditation exercises. It really is just a safe space for me and everyone else that goes to relax and is sort of reset for the week.
My name is Anna. I'm VP of membership development at Elkhorn Hosa. I'm competing in public service. Our PSA topic this year is bone donation, bone marrow donation, and this happens through the National Bone Marrow Donation Registry, Be The Match. It is our goal this year and our national service project to raise over five hundred dollars for Be The Match, and so far we've raised over sixty.
Hi, my name is Julian Howard. I am current assistant middle school liaison at Elkhorn Hosa. I'm going to be competing in forensic science this year as well. I've been working in collaboration with middle school as well as my fellow officers to implement a middle school policy chapter. And that's basically aimed at how the middle school is kind of become immersed in the medical field because there aren't a lot of opportunities for middle school currently. And so they can kind of see that's maybe what they want in class seven at high school or further education when it comes to college. We also have the idea of implementing a study buddy system where we take our high school members and take them over to middle school and they're on study with our middle school members. This is very good for both our high school and middle school students. The high schoolers get to demonstrate their leadership and work with building skills when it comes to kids. And then our middle school students get to study and kind of get entered into a lot of competition because there are a lot of other stuff for them.
So that's a little bit on what we've been up to over the beginning of this year. And I guess we would just love your approval to go to our state competition. The numbers that you have on the documents that I sent are two years ago numbers. We don't have the current numbers yet for either the state conference or the international conference. So I just put together what was relevant in two thousand and nineteen. I don't see that changing a whole lot as far as the grand total that kids would be responsible for in either of those two cases. For the state leadership conference, we have state boss, statue of vista, that's been the same as I've any advisor. Kids can kind of alter the amount that they have to pay based on their room assignment. So they could, they could stay in a room by themselves, that would be more costly to them, or they could have up to six people in their room, and then the costs just keep coming down from there. So that's sort of the state part of it. I don't know, do you want to address that first?
No, you can go back.
Or do you want me to do international?
I think we just prove it as one motion.
Okay. And then the international conference in Nashville, Tennessee. I have been to an international before Nashville, so we did take a bus the first time, and that was one of the worst experiences of my entire life. So I'm hoping that we get to take a flight this time. Oh, it was like ninety-seven degrees and the air conditioning went off the bus for the whole ride home. It scared me for life, and I need more Wellness Wednesdays. I need to overcome that. So we're hoping to take a flight. My dates are slightly off on there. It is five nights typically, but it would begin on the twenty-first, a Tuesday, and we would arrive home on the twenty-sixth. So competition actually starts on a Wednesday, the twenty-second, so we would already need to be in Tennessee that Tuesday evening and then be prepped for all our competitions and outbreak activities on the twenty-second. And for those two, none of them have presented in front of me before, so. Feeling a little job today.
Any questions, board members?
Why, it's the Nashville.
Yeah. I'm hoping. An aprilia. Yes, it is. We did, last time we did take, one of our versions was the Grand Ole Opry. And the reason, actually, and I did this two years ago, you may not remember that. We wait until after our state competition to come back and ask for permission to go to internationals. So many other states hold their state competition earlier, so they get the prime hotel rooms then, and we have to wait to see who made it to state and then book hotel rooms then. In two thousand and nineteen, we had the best hotel that I had all booked and ready, and then all got canceled. So hopefully, hopefully this year, we can get the Conference Center Hotel, which takes away a whole bunch of transportation issues while we're in Nashville. You can go to Oxford Press, you can go to the mall and eat. Yes. Just food for. Yes. And there's restaurants right in there too. It's really cool hotel. Yeah, it's beautiful. Hopefully, we can book that one.
All right. Looking for a motion.
I move to approve the overnight travel request from Hosa as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
To move the second to approve the overnight travel request from Hosa as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
All right, good luck. Great job tonight.
Thank you for all your support for years, too. That means a lot. We appreciate it a lot.
All right, next, former events from December thirteenth. Regular session attached, closed session passed out. Questions?
We do them together, or do you want them separate?
I should just separate. Any questions? Comments? All right, looking for a motion.
I'm moving to approve the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular session school board meeting as presented.
There's a second.
Second.
So moving to second to approve the minutes of November third, or November, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, regular sessions, school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Abstain.
Mr. Martel?
Abstain.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Uh, sorry, Ms. Stoltz?
Yeah.
And Ms. Borpego?
Yeah.
All right, closed session.
I'll move to approve the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, closed sessions, school board meeting as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the minutes of December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, closed sessions, school board meeting as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Abstain.
Mr. Gayheart?
Abstain.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Abstain.
Mr. Martel?
Abstain.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Abstain.
Ms. Borpego?
Abstain.
General and other fund bills. Mr. Trump, the general and other fund bills, the scene covers checks number one four four, nine one four three one four five, one one six, wire transfer number one one two six to one one four five, ACH check numbers two fifty-five to two eighty-eight, option renovation wire number one one two five, voided check number one four 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 five eight, and voided ACH check number two one two two zero zero two six four, and the combined amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents. And the listing, you may have noticed, included two runs because we did them in December. Questions for Mr. Trump? Very none. Need for motion?
I move to approve the general and other fund bills of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, check numbers one four four nine one four to one four five one one six, wire numbers one one two six to one one four five, ACH check numbers two five five to two eighty, options renovation wire number one one two five, voided check number one one, one four 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 five eight, and voided ACH check number two one two two. That's a weird number. Sorry, two one two two zero zero two six four, in the combined amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
So moving to second to approve the general and other fund bills of January tenth, two thousand and twenty-two, checks number one four four nine one four one four five one one six, wire numbers one one two six to one one four five, ACH check numbers two five five to two eighty, options renovation wire number one one two five, voided check number one four 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 five eight, and voided ACH number two one two two zero zero two six four, combined amount of four hundred eighty-one thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents as presented. Pro couple.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yeah.
Open enrollment spaces for two thousand and twenty-three.
Each year, we are required in January to set open enrollment spaces for the entire school district. When, and the board does have a policy related to the maximum class size for all non-special education programs that is included at the top of this document here for kindergarten, twenty-five students per regular classroom, grades one through three, twenty-five, grades four through five, thirty, and high school, thirty-two students. And looking at the analysis of our average students per class, there is not a grade level at which we are close to meeting or exceeding that cap district-wide. There are some grade levels where, for example, at Tibbetts, there may be a couple sections that they have the twenty-five within that kindergarten through second grade span. When a family open rolls to the school district, they open roll to the district, not to the school. So they can request which school they want to go to. We let them know if there's space or not. So there is not a recommendation to cap any of our seats for the regular education. We do have two special education programs, our ACE program and our new program, the RISE program, which we're recommending that we cap at one seat for both of those programs. That by putting it, the cap at one seat, where we feel both of them are pretty close to full, but it gives us the flexibility that if we have students move out, that we can still allow students to come in. If we capped it at no seats, then we wouldn't have that flexibility to go ahead and meet people if we had them. But we feel it would not put us in a position where either of the programs are overpopulated.
Jason, can you explain the ACE and the RISE program?
Yeah, so our ACE program is, it's our magnet program here at Jackson Elementary, focuses on more emotional behavior. Needs, our RISE program is neurological spectrum needs or disorders that over at Jackson Elementary School, and that's a magnet program for the district.
Okay. We had it in our notes for the motion that the RISE program will be capped, but there's no seats. Right. But you're saying that you want to change that to one open seat available?
My under.
Yeah, it says one available in ACE.
Yeah. Did you hear that question, Emily?
Yeah, I can interject. I agree with what Jason said, leaving one space gives us flexibility. I think with the RISE program, because we know what's potentially coming our direction from early childhood, we could be up to nine kids already just within district. So I, and we can go either way. We can either cap it or leave one space. I'd be comfortable doing either one, but the projections for next year for RISE are a little bit higher than ACE.
I apologize. I missed that one after our meeting. In our meeting that we had.
That we said one. But then when I came back and looked at the kids, looked at the kids coming out of early childhood and there, there could be more movement there. Because thinking about RISE, it's a little bit of a more, a little bit more restrictive of a setting because they do offer that highly specialized kind of resource support for the social, the sensory, and in the communication. Some of those students are, you know, using devices and learning how to communicate. So that program, you know, I would say is a little bit more restrictive than what's offered in the, in the other schools.
So are you okay with one seat available, or would you prefer to have no seats available?
I, I'm really okay with one, Jason, but I also, I would also be, you know, okay with capping it. It's real, it's a little hard to say in January, to be honest, because we don't know for sure where those early childhood placements are going to end up. I think the, the safe decision would probably be to, to cap it.
To cap it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Are you guys, are you guys okay with that? I just think with it being a new program too, it, it might be wise to. I just think with it being a new program too, it, it might be wise to not overload it and since we don't have any deficits.
That's fine, it was just my, for some reason, my recollection was I thought we had done one, but in my board notes I had it.
Yep.
It was a big cap.
You're right though, Jason, we did go back and forth on that, we weren't, I don't know that we completely.
We got it capped as originally recommended.
One in ACE, capped it, right?
Thank you.
Questions?
As you look at sections, Jason, how do we do it for like the high school? I know like in the elementary, it's easy because you have that many third grade teachers, that many fourth grade teachers. But when we get up to like the high school, how do we have it as number of sections? How do we allocate sections when we have so many specialties and outreaches from there?
Yeah, they look at the number of staff they have, how many sections are they eligible to teach and then divided by the number of students and how many classes they take. So that's just an average, but that average, as you know, Paul, that can vary greatly where some of our classes are at thirty or above and some of our classes will be down as low as nine or ten from time to time, not very often.
Right, I was just wondering when it said twelve sections, I was wondering how we were labeling a twelve, twelfth grade sections or twelve eleventh grade sections.
Yeah, so a teacher teaches four of five and that's three trimesters. So each teacher would have twelve sections of eight, teach on a full load.
Okay, but it's really not a nine, a ten, eleven, or twelve because there's mixed classes of nine, ten, eleven, and twelve in one. So it's just basically, it's just basically, um, class composition availability, okay?
Yeah, so you're right, that may not be like, well, yeah, so you'll have some freshmen and mixed classes, it might be a freshman sophomore class. But for the ease of calculating that out.
Yep, no, I understand, it was just, I was wondering because I know it's pretty easy to see fifth grade, we have nine teachers, it's, it's pretty simple. When we get up into that other thing, it just, I was just wondering how we calculated that, but when you go with sections taught, total class periods, blah, blah, then it does make sense.
Yeah. Good question.
Other questions?
I move to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students and all grade levels and for special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district. With the exception of the ACE program where there is one seat available and the RISE program where there are no seats available for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Is there a second?
Second.
And it's been moved in second to place no caps on open enrollment spaces for regular education students and all grade levels and for special education students who qualify for programs already established within the district. With the exception of the ACE program where there's one seat available and the RISE program where there are no seats available for the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three school year.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Report and discussion, steering report.
Okay, I mixed it up a little bit, I mean, kinda, you know, you'll see.
You'll see.
Are we gonna see it too? This is the last one, by the way. So do you want to go back to the first one? Yeah, I have, I, I, this is what I mean by mix them up. So for CCA, they put up some drywall in the past couple weeks at their house that they were working on and they've made so many improvements, it looks so cool. Looking through the photos last night, I was like, wow, they really built the house. So that, that was pretty cool, but that's about all. Um, from West Side, an ugly sweater day and Polar Express and PJ day, which I think is so cute. And then the first graders at a gingerbread house making competition and, um, there's 3D printing in the school as well, which I think is so much fun because I haven't had that as like elementary school. That's really cool that they're able to figure that out and do that for themselves. Then the next side at the middle school, so Santa visited and, um, some sixth graders made some gingerbread house competitions and the seventh and eighth graders, um, got certified in JavaScript, which is awesome. What else can you certify than that? And the sixth graders also had a welcome back breakfast, which is very nice. And then in Jackson, there's some elves dressed up at lunch and of course the photo on the corner. Um, they, they had a drive for the Lakewood Animal Shelter, which is amazing. They had a PJ day and the girls basketball team at the high school actually came and read to some of the, um, elementary school kids, which I thought was really sweet and nice. And then options, they had a Polar Express PJ night where everybody came in their PJs and there was hot cocoa and popcorn and they watched Polar Express and they got to take some photos together and I thought that was really cool. So then at Tibbetts, an ugly sweater day and, um, a few kids participated in the GOV, which is also very cool. They also had a gingerbread house competition, they started making them, they drew them. And, um, Tini and Santa visited the high school as well, which is fantastic. Up at high school, Tibbetts.
That was a scary sad point.
I wanna know with that, I think that's so funny, they've been here for a long time. They really?
Yeah, they've been here for years.
Oh, that's so cool.
And they're on their route, so it's really fun.
Yeah, of course, like the little kiddos, you know, looking up at that. So then at the high school, we had a lot of activities this week. Well, first of all, the VFW Voice of Democracy essay contest, Lauren, congratulations. And as well as Marshall Griffin and, um, I'm not looking at her name. Liz Grimes. Thank you, Liz Grimes, oh, one, so that is fantastic. Did you win a lot? What'd you win? Woo, good for you. Awesome.
Have you qualified to go?
No, Marshall, I think does.
Marshall.
He's placed in the high school.
Okay.
That's really cool, good job. And then at Rockford, this weekend, the boys' host and invite, we had a lot of people place, which I think is really cool.
It is great because it's a small team this year.
Yeah, yeah, that's amazing. And then wrestling this weekend, they got second in their tournament and they lost at Evansville, which is third in the state. So it was, it was a good loss if anything, but it was a really cool tournament. And then the Emerald Classic, which gymnastics goes much to Waterford and they ended up winning that, which is amazing. And then this weekend, a parothing team hosted our first meet at the high school and it went incredibly well. Went really well, they went out for no hitches, everything was set up really great and we actually ended up with five people qualifying for state at the meet and.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. And, um, our girls varsity team won overall at the meet for the most weight.
Good for you guys.
Thank you, it was a really, it was a really good way to have first meet at home, so it was really fun.
How many volunteers do you have working there?
Oh my goodness, so many. It's insane because. Yeah, so we had to be judged. There's like a, there's a platform, is what it's called, not each platform, you have three ju, three judges, four spotters, two table workers.
Wow. I've never seen so many people at the gym.
There were so, so many people, we had four of those platforms.
It was cool.
It was pretty crazy, but wow, yeah, we were really happy to host it too and it went off so well.
Yeah, I give a lot of credit to Mr. Stoltz for, his public advisor, putting that together and the coordination started weeks ago to get the squad racks put together, the platforms built and, yeah, so it's.
WASB resolutions.
Hey, uh, we don't need this, this is here just for the board's perusal and if there's any one of those resolutions that you want to talk about or discuss, it's on the agenda there for you. Again, the WASB conference is coming up. Next week, yeah, so it's gonna be an awesome opportunity to, how many are, any planning on going to the WASB conference next week?
Yeah, generally.
All right. All right.
I can, can I say something?
Yes, go ahead, Barb.
Um, I'm not going to be attending even virtually for the WASB resolutions because I have a, um, my treatments are planned at that time, so I won't be able to even do that.
Okay. So is there anyone else who wants to attend the delegate assembly for the resolution?
What day is that, Barb?
It's on Wednesday and I think it's like it.
Is that?
One in the afternoon, maybe? I'd have to look it up, I've got my folder here. Um.
It's actually at one?
One thirty it says.
Oh, one thirty.
Okay, it's one thirty, yeah, and I'll just be getting done with treatment, so I won't be able to get back home in time to do that.
Yeah, you have to be there from eight to nine for the orientation.
No, you don't have to be.
Oh, you don't?
No, you don't have, maybe they make you virtually, but they've never, we've never done it before. Something you. If you do it, you have to let them know you're taking my place.
I gotta look at my calendar because I'm not sure what I have going on for Wednesday.
Um, yeah, just, I guess, according with Barb, if you are going to take her place if you want to, so that she can let them know.
Okay.
Uh, those attending in person, you, they sent an email, you have to have either your vaccination card or a negative COVID test within. Seventy two hours?
Yeah.
Which.
I was gonna ask.
Will be interesting with the rapid testing.
Well, I was just gonna ask, is there a way for me to get a negative COVID test like next week sometime?
Yeah, probably due for Wednesday, I'd reach out to Mary.
To Mary?
We, we should have enough in stock to still have them next. Was there, so you can step on us later?
Yeah, okay.
All of this things, yeah, I'll, I'll get into that a little bit more in the announcements, but I, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay.
All right.
New policies, first ratings.
The, yeah, policy committee had met, there were two, um, updates to policies that we recommended for the board as a whole. The first one is related to inventories and it's shifting the dollar amount of, yeah, I should probably just turn over the bill this morning, but basically capital assets and what we inventory and at what dollar level. Previously it was a thousand dollars.
Correct.
We're shifting it to five thousand dollars, which is.
Yeah, I remember that.
Thousand dollars doesn't buy you much anymore.
Yeah, I remember that being part of the recommendations for the audit.
Yeah. Any questions on this one, before we move on? The next policy is in the, uh, facility use. The modification, um, to provide some clarity. Cause it was a little difficult in doing it by age, so we'd like to shift it to, um, grade level. So basically the previous policy was intended to allow eighth graders to come during the community hours and work out. Um, so the age of thirteen created some issues where some eighth graders weren't thirteen, some were. And so that's the recommendation to shift that policy likewise if other graders were from that. So shifting it to the grade level, that doesn't preclude middle school students who are part of a training program, which we do have those, whether it be our lifting club or the other school sponsor or community sponsored training programs, they can participate in that. This is just coming in during that three hour block of meetings.
Can we get talks that as soon as they're done, if that is great, if they qualify going into the next.
Yes, so, yeah, the last day of school, so we consider them eighth graders for that summer going.
Okay, that makes sense, that they can train for sports going into the next.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Any questions on that? All I have for the first reading of the policy?
When it comes up, let Mr. Chad Black know before the next meeting. Uh, recommendation of district administration personnel.
All right, the personnel sheet is there and included. Want to thank all of those who are leading us for their service and wish them the best and welcome those who have joined us and answer any questions to the best of my ability of the board.
Questions? Miss Ellen Lees here. We know everybody, but.
I know, we know who's coming up.
I can't believe Ellen's been here for thirteen years, it doesn't feel like it.
Thirteen years since she started working in education when I was four.
Wow.
Seventy nine, yes. She had, was it thirty years in East Troy?
East Troy, and when she was in East Troy, they got their own bus system, so she was the bus manager.
Oh, wow.
But I, I, she hasn't been here for thirteen, it doesn't feel like it.
Yeah.
We could say no.
Yeah. All right, but any other questions or comments?
I move to approve the personal recommendation sheet for January tenth, twenty twenty two, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district manager's first screen as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to approve the personal recommendation sheet for January tenth, twenty twenty two, including new employment contracts conditioned upon passing the background check and district manager's first screen.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Motion carried. School gifts.
All right, let me pull up my, apologize, I didn't print off the board next week. Thus the mistake when you look in the seats. All right, uh, school gifts tonight, we have, um, seven to share with you. Holton Foundation has donated a thousand dollars to the Elkhorn area high school band program and five hundred dollars to the Elkhorn area middle school band program. The Nicholas DeSerge Foundation has donated two thousand six hundred eight four dollars and seventeen cents towards the development of the Fitness Nature Trail. An anonymous donor has donated five thousand dollars to the high school baseball team. St. John and the Wilderness Church has donated two hundred dollars to the high school baseball team. Karen Bloom has donated fitness balls and a storage rack to the high school by eight hundred two hundred fifty dollars. The Pharmacy Station has donated thirty five cases of sanitizer wipes valued at two thousand four hundred dollars. And Sugar Creek Lutheran Church has donated one thousand dollars for the snack and a pack of Coke. So I want to thank all of those generous donors for supporting school.
That's over thirteen thousand dollars. Unbelievable.
Looking for a motion to approve our generous gifts?
I move to accept the generous school gifts as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
So moving to second to accept the generous gifts of the Holton Foundation, Nicholas DeSerge Foundation, an anonymous donor, St. John's of the Wilderness Church, Karen Bloom, the Pharmacy Station, and Sugar Creek Lutheran Church as presented.
Mrs. Fisher?
Yes.
Yeah.
Mr. Gayheart?
Yes.
Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.
Announcements.
All right, our next school board meeting will start over at, uh, actually the Friends of Awards, it's not said that it's a school board meeting, but oftentimes the board members will attend. It will be at the middle school. I'm sorry, we're doing it at the high school.
I was gonna say. Okay, yeah.
At six o'clock. Get a little bit more spacing in the seating. And the board meeting will be back at the district office at seven o'clock. The, um, WASB convention, we talked about that and I did want to share with the school board, just so you're aware, um, in our meetings with the local health department. The Omicron virus, last time they checked, was around seventy percent of the cases, they don't test every case that comes in, but they do samplings. As such, you know, it's much more virulent, um, transmissible and we're seeing that take place, it's supposed to be less severe. And we are seeing, at least anecdotally, we don't track the data on the severity of that, but we're, um, seeing, you know, less severe overall. There are still individuals that they have very severe reactions, whether it's Omicron or the Delta variant still, we're not, you know, we don't know. But, um, to get a feel for that growth, we had had a meeting with the county just right before the break and statewide, um, the Omicron variant was around six percent at that time. um, the Omicron variant was around six percent at that time, so it's jumped from six percent to seven percent in just a matter of weeks. Depending on how you look at it, it's better to have that one take over rather than.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
It's very, it's more contagious, but it's definitely a weaker virus.
So a little over a year ago Thanksgiving time, when we were doing the quarantining and the positive tests, to give you an idea, at our peaks, we were hitting around two ninety. That's all staff, students, again, not people that were sick, but that was sick plus quarantined or isolated. We shifted our, um, process this year, but we still do our contact tracing. So we don't call them quarantines, it's a
Watch list.
Watch list. Or close contacts. So as you can see, this was, uh, last year, the fall got really in a great position in the spring of last year. And then the start of this year, let's see, we actually added the column over here. And we really, we did get up pretty high, um, early on, I'm, you know. And then we dropped down, my favorite day of the year was January four. Uh, let's see, whoops. Because, uh, you know, after the break, everybody was timed out, just because we didn't have a chance to count the data.
Right.
The bad news, we're, we're at an all time high right now, uh, people who are on the watch list as far as the, and as well as positive and quarantine. So there's still, if they're at home exposure, it's quarantine.
Yeah.
Like school exposure, watch list. Um, and you can see as far as our positive cases, it's
Yeah.
At a very high number. If you look at it from a graph standpoint, this was the few days that we took off during that Thanksgiving time to drive it down, um, and here's where it's at right now. So we're seeing very high numbers right now. Um, there's the new guidance through the CDC and so forth that Mary did adopt and we sent out in cooperation with our medical advisor, our medical advisor strongly recommended the negative rapid test prior to them returning. The rapid test isn't as sensitive as the PCR.
Correct.
So that gives you a good indication that they're no longer contagious. We may have to change that guidance because there's a shortage of rapid tests. We have about three hundred and thirty left. Um, that, that should last us a couple of weeks, but we did receive word from the state today that Mary was seeking clarification on, that they basically directed schools to save the rapid test for staff and personnel and to stop testing students and families. So
Yeah.
If that's the case, that would probably give us enough rapid tests to get, you know, through an extended amount of time, but it would change how we need to look at that return to school timeframe and that guidance that we just sent out. So there may need to be another modification, which you're all aware from watching the news, how wonderfully accepting people are of the changes to protocols when they come. So.
Are you being facetious?
Not at all, there, there, people are extremely understanding and, um, the flexibility amazes me. In all sincerity, our community's been very good. While I say that facetiously, our, our community has been very good with that. We only get a few emails every time we do a change, not a lot. So, but that's the situation with the testing, so we very well may need to change some of those protocols and just shift it to after the onset of symptoms, you know, X amount of time before you can. So that's likely what we're looking at. And again, it does put a, um, stressor on that system, on staff. I am really grateful that the board approved the, um, seventeenth for that day off and then on that President's Day weekend, I think it gives some respite and also some time on those weekends, because if you're out a minimum of five days, having those four day weekends, it really does help from a a staff standpoint too. Um, so, yeah, just wanted to share that, answer any questions you might have. It was the first with the new CDC guidelines, it was the quickest I've seen the Department of Health from the state and the county, I'll jump on board and go with it.
So with the state's recommendation, is that what the district is planning on doing is stop testing the students for?
I need to talk with Mary tomorrow, but I think they got several recommendations from the state that I have, I, I saw one of the emails and we weren't certain if that was just related to the state test centers or to all, and so I'm guessing it's probably to all.
Right.
Which means they're not anticipating being restocked.
That's what I don't understand, like, how is this?
Rapid tests became real popular also, I don't.
Well, I understand that, but.
There's stock, stock on them for the Bush's mandate, waiting for that to be
Oh, for the companies having.
And that's going to be millions of dollars much for testing, that's what they're doing. My opinion.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I don't know, I did watch one news report that I think Biden mentioned his plan that to fund immediately a half billion more rapid tests and whoever was speaking pointed out that that's not nearly enough. If you tell, you know, five hundred million rapid tests and divide it by fifty states.
Yeah.
This has been. Uh, yeah, we're doing, we're probably doing seventy plus rapid tests.
Yeah. Right, I mean, trouble. Right.
Alright. Um, that's all I have for the announcements, I want to end on that cherry one there. Um, but we do have a closed session.
Looking for a motion to adjourn the closed session.
Uh, move to adjourn to a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen, that eighty-five, parent one, parent C, to discuss employees' requests. The school board will not begin the open session.
Is there a second? So move to second to adjourn the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute nineteen twenty-five one C, to discuss employees' requests. The school board will not begin the open session. Go public.
Mrs. Fisher? Barb, you still there?
Yes, I muted, sorry.
Alright, no problem. Uh, Mr. Gayhart? Mrs. Ingersoll?
Yes.
Mr. Martel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ray?
Yes.
Mr. Scarrow?
Yes.
Ms. Stoltz?
Yes.
Ms. Borpego?
Yes.